That's what we did was cross back into the US at Niagara.
I have nine o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Start with pledge allegiance.
Maclure.
Here.
Packard.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Manning.
Mr. Manning. You're muted. There he is.
I'm here.
Alrighty. And Hammond.
Here.
Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none, approval of agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion approved. Approve minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yes. I think there's one spot down there, it says that, that we're going to save thirty-nine thousand some dollars if we, if we made the cuts in our budgets of the, of the special interest groups. I think it's more than that, isn't it? Isn't it like a hundred and twenty thousand and then we basically only go spend thirty-nine?
Uh, you're right.
Oh, yes, that's right.
You're right.
Yep, we'll get that corrected.
Thank you.
Yep. That's all I got.
If you approve that with the.
Yeah, move is amended, correct.
Second is amended.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard? Hearing none, Rod. Microserving change order.
Yeah.
Microphone please.
Sorry about that, there's a savings of eighty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars fifty-three cents to the original contract for the microserving. And Brad's, I see is up there, so I'll let him explain all the.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm online, so, yeah, the savings is, we pay that by the square yard. So, um, uh, there's a, uh, few stretches of the road, you know, we do spot measurements, where, where it was not, not quite as wide. I, I had some in there also, um, in case we added any. So, um, you know, the saves is just we did fewer square yards than I, I had in the plans. So, we put down the same amount of material per square foot. Um, and actually they, they put on a little bit more than I specified. And I'm gonna redo the specifications here, um, next time, so. So you got the same amount of actual material, or, or a little more, just a fewer square, but smaller amount of square yards than I had in the plans. So, we still did all the roads like we were gonna, it's just, you know, um, I just had a little extra in, in the plans. Also, you'll notice, and I wanna make sure everyone sees, you know, I added two days to the completion date. So the completion date was September twenty-fifth, they finished on the seventeenth. You know, one of the reasons, you know, they came to me, they were going to do the city of Irene after, they were done with our project, but the city of Irene was having their homecoming parade and they're freaking out a little bit, so we let them pick up and finish Irene before their homecoming and then come back and finished, our project. So I didn't, you know, and they asked us about that and we, we said that was okay. And, and one other too is, is, you know, they wanted the, we asked them to come in at the end of the season also, we weren't ready for them in June when they, when they were asked to come out, so. It's two days, you know, I had September fifteenth and we have that in there just because we don't want the weather to get sketchy, but the weather was really good too. So, that, 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 that's the, the, um, change order in a nutshell. What that does is that changes the, um, the contract to all of the as constructed quantities. And then, you know, so that files that project out. So, if anyone's got any questions, I'd be happy to, happy to try to answer them.
We basically got everything we wanted done, done for less than.
Yeah. Yeah, we didn't add any length this year, like we did last year, that's too bad, but.
Well, we, we already had more scheduled this year than even after the addition last year, so.
Yes. No, it looked like it was a, a good project, well done Brad.
Thank you.
Which is the board?
I'll move to approve the contract and.
Well, so, you have the change order and a final page, so you wanna do both or you just wanna do the one for changes?
I. Okay, I was, I guess, with accepting the final bid with the change order. Cover the ground.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion and a second to pay the change order and final page, correct?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes.
And then I do have one thing, Carrie, if you could, when, when those are all signed, scan me a copy, because I, I keep a copy of everything too, just in case.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll do that this afternoon.
Propane quotes, or Brad, did you have anything else for us?
Um. Um, I, I, I did have and I got a plan, I was assuming you wanted me to take care of your, um, that small structure inventory?
Yep.
Okay, okay. So, I got a plan for that, um, um, prob, we're, we're gonna start doing those, um, you know, I, I, I'm, I have Union County to, to do also, so we're gonna start doing those here probably in a couple of weeks. And, and we're, we're, I'm gonna use the DOT's GIS and, and we'll get, we'll, we'll get that all taken care of. I guess one other thing too, you know, we had a kickoff meeting for your, your planning study and that went very well. I guess congratulations, as many of those I went to, we don't have as much participation as we did on this one, so I was, I really appreciate all the input that, that, that you, that the members all had, that was, uh, much better than, than most.
Yeah, I thought we covered a lot of ground there.
Yeah, we really did.
Good meeting.
It was really good meeting, so.
I don't say that very often, good meeting, but. It's extra special then, Brad.
Yeah. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna mute.
On the Yankton Clay ditch, Brad, or are you still working on 3D to get that done?
Yeah, yeah, I, I have talked to him, um, you know, he's gonna, he's gonna roll in after he gets a few things done. So, he, he's gonna finish it.
Okay. Do they have anything else for Brad?
No, I, I don't know if that corn's out yet or not, I haven't checked.
Yeah, I haven't been over there either.
Yeah.
Thanks Brad. Propane quotes.
I'll make a motion to accept the grow mark from Centerville and a dollar sixty per gallon.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. Diesel quotes.
I'll make a motion, we accept the quote from Brunick Service for two thirty-seven a gallon.
Second that.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes, project cost record journal for the gun club.
And did you see that, I, we usually go down when they request to blade the road and we never turn anything in, this time apparently they don't wanna trim the trees, so we filled the holes in with gravel. Tied a guy, down there was a skid loader and a load of gravel, I didn't know if that was something we're supposed to charge them for. So, that's why I brought it up, is that just something we're gonna do for them, makes no difference to me. I know we've charged the campground, you know, no labor, the gravel when we built the pads. I didn't, I didn't know what, that's why I brought it up, and it is pretty minor, but.
Yeah, there's been some discussion. I, I think about how those things will work for all three organizations and, um, I, you know, I think we've referred it to, to the Advisory Committee, because right now we have different arrangements with all three groups and it, yeah, I mean, there, there's no clear, I mean, would you agree with me, there's, 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 there's no clear policy and so I think what we're looking for from the Advisory Committee is to make some clear policy on our relationship with, with all three groups and how that's gonna go, so in some sense, I think we're looking at a one-off here, I mean, have we ever charged them before?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I mean, it, it, it seems like we should, um, at least charge for materials, because it's, you know, it's a small private association, it's not, it's not the whole county that gets to go there and shoot, it's just a small private association, so it seems fair to invoice them.
I think with the way our budget is, that we probably should charge for these types of services that we give them.
The blading too, or just materials?
For sure, the materials and spreading.
Because we've done the blading, right Rod?
No.
This is the first time?
We, oh, a few years back, we bladed in there, plus we went in and mowed with our big mower along the road in there. But, I mean.
Yeah.
Seems the more we do, the more we get asked to do.
Yeah, I, I actually referred them to the township, they were, they were griping because we didn't get to them all summer, you know, because we've got other stuff to do, the, the county department does, and I said, well, how about if you just contact the township to do this? It'll probably be a couple a hundred bucks to do the, do the job and, uh, heck, I'll, I'll do a non-participatory, uh, membership, I'll toss in fifty or seventy-five bucks to, towards the couple a hundred bucks if that's, uh, if that'll work for you and, uh, it's kinda like the bus part, I guess. But, uh, I think especially the way things are now, uh, that we oughta do that, I know in, the, sometimes if you ask them, the township grader will come down and do your driveway once in a while, you know, I've had, I've had that done here in Vermillion Township where they come in and, and, uh, gratis, they pull in and out, it takes them ten minutes to, to, uh, blade the, blade the driveway and they, you know, they don't expect, they don't expect payment, they don't, uh, pay a bill, uh, or ask you for, for payment, but, uh, here where we had to do quite a bit of extra work, I wonder if we shouldn't bill them for that, especially with today's budget situations.
And I, making a big deal, I, I just wanna make sure I'm doing the right thing.
It's, it's old right now, so it's easier to nip at the bud.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
And if they were to trim the trees, we could've used the blade.
Yeah.
But the tree branches are hanging over the road that everybody's driving out in the grass to miss the holes. So, and we, we blade it once before when the branches weren't as bad as they were and took that antenna off or two ways, so.
And that had been a few years ago at least.
Yeah, it's been three at least.
Yeah.
We've waited to glass. But, um, I was just looking for some direction, I guess, I'm not sure.
Any thoughts on your end, Mike?
I guess I would feel that we should charge them and, in, in any, any group that's down there that we do work for, I feel like we should charge them, I mean, that's, they're not part, they're not, not every, as Betty said, not everybody in the county is, is getting benefits from all this, so I think they're a private group, I think we need to charge them, period.
Yeah, it is on our land, you know, that's the other consideration, but still, it's, uh, it's not for our benefit that it's, that it's done, it's for their benefit. Especially where we had to do a bunch of extra work here, and it's four hundred and seventy-two bucks, so I'd move, we sent them a bill for four seventy-two, itemized like this.
I would second it.
Add a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes. Anything else Rod?
No. Yes. Execution.
Oh, you're on there. Um. Say, oh, on University, south of the Wakanda oil.
Okay.
On Tom Austin's, he was in the bottom of the ditch cleaning. Did we know about that?
Yeah, that, that's part of that driveway thing and I've stopped and talked to him yesterday too, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep. Yeah, and, and he called to, or, because he knows somebody would, was gonna call.
Yeah, right.
Microphone Travis.
That's on.
Oh. Yep, that's better.
Um, anything else for Rod? Hearing none. Ina, are you gonna come across? Okay. Okay, let's go down to vouchers and payroll, everybody get to see those?
I move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes.
I'm gonna appear.
Let's grab Rod's microphone.
Okay, this is a normal bill, but it's, uh, since you need to sign all the contracts, it's something that we do every year, it's about a hundred and sixty dollars this year. It's rateable, it's, it's through Marshall Swift, it's where we get our cost for our values.
So the contracts essentially what we've had in the past.
Yeah, yeah, we've always done it and I've always signed off on it, but now, since you want all the contracts.
Yeah, and it's a hundred and sixty bucks more than it was last year.
Right.
Move to approve and have the chairman sign.
Second.
I'm a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Maclure.
Yes, motion passes. You want this Ina or this Carrie again? Let's see, Transcendent Technologies and Software Services.
Um, just a brief introduction here, we've got several members from Transcendent Technologies and also Patty from Software Services. Patty is going to be retiring, so it's time to select a new software provider and get that conversion process started. Myself, Rhonda, Lisa have all done our research. We've looked at, and I sent you, um, an email with the cost comparison of what it might cost to switch to Tyler Technologies versus Transcendent Technologies, um, or T-Tech, as they like to call themselves. It's gonna be significantly cheaper to use T-Tech, um, they're a new company from Wisconsin, while the company is not new, they're new to South Dakota. Already had a few counties that have signed on to use them, uh, they're going to build the software that we need to do what we need it to do. And, um, you know, again, significantly less cost, they're gonna work with Patty to do that. And so they wanted to give you, uh, you know, an introduction to their company and then, you know, give you an opportunity to ask any questions, to ask any questions of, of Patty and of me and, and Rhonda and Lisa. We've all kind of been through their presentations and meetings with them and with Patty and I think the three of us are, are all on board that we really like the company. Few drawbacks, I think, on, on Ina's side of things, but I'm not sure that there's a good solution for that.
So it's not really gonna save. I don't know that it's gonna save us any money. Because we're not in what they're quoting, there's no price in there for us.
But you're gonna get the service you need.
Um, they're gonna have to write a program and I'm not sure that that's doable yet.
That might be something that, something that they could answer, that Patty could answer, but.
So what happens if they can't?
I don't. I don't know how it's all going to go, why don't you look at their, what they have to present and then.
Yeah, well, in, in the contract, it does say that any services that are not, um, that, that are needed in order to get one program to talk to another would be, they could do it, but it would be a hundred to two hundred dollars an hour for the work. So, well, we'd need an estimate of how many hours that would be, I think.
And just a side note too, um, they are offering us and kind of an introductory pricing right now, which I think that they'll get into as well, where if we sign a ten-year maintenance contract with them, they don't charge us for, you know, the actual software. So, it ends up being a significant savings, you know, a hundred thousand or more, I, I think. Last time that we had checked around to see what Tyler might be charging, was, you know, several years ago when Jane was looking at moving software, it was gonna be like almost four hundred thousand dollars to switch to Tyler at that point in time. That was several years ago, so. But, um, we'll maybe let them go ahead and give their presentation or let Patty jump in and that might help answer questions.
So, Carrie, is that my cue that we should start?
Yeah, go right ahead, Christy.
Okay, thanks everybody for joining us, um, I know we have a limited amount of time, but we wanted to give you a little overview of who Transcendent Technologies is, our values, our goals and our proposal for Clay County. As Carrie mentioned, we have done a presentation for the elected officials, um, and we actually were at convention a couple of weeks ago and, um, had some really good discussions. If you wouldn't mind, I would like to just take this opportunity to introduce everybody at T-Tech as well as, um, Patty, whom I'm sure you're all very familiar with. I guess I will start, um, my name is Christy Werzer, I've worked with county and municipal government for a board of twenty-one years. I've been with the company almost seven and, uh, we are new to South Dakota, but we're not new to this industry, so we're very excited to start this process in South Dakota. Kristen Anderson is actually sitting right across from me, Kristen, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure, hi, thank you everyone for letting us join you today, um, my name is Kristen Anderson. I am the business operations manager here at Transcendent Technologies. I've been with the company for about two and a half years, um, but like Christy said, as a company, we're not new to, um, to land records and software development in the state of Wisconsin. My background is actually twenty-one years in county government where I worked with the property listing staff, GIS and survey. So again, thank you all for the opportunity to introduce you to Transcendent Technologies and what we have to offer.
Okay, Steve Moore, would you like to introduce?
Yeah, hello everybody, my name is Steve Moore, I'm one of the owners here at Transcendent Technologies, co-founders along with Tarek Ghazi, who will introduce himself in a moment. Again, I wanna reiterate, thank you for the opportunity to work with us, uh, we started this company back in late two thousand eight, early two thousand and nine, started with the land records, um, to property tax program, uh, here and we built other, um, programs for county government into the state of Wisconsin, permit tracking land and water conservation and Christy and, and, uh, Kristen and, and Patty will be going through, uh, that offering. Again, I wanna thank you for the opportunity, we've really enjoyed working with Patty and she seems to have a great group of customers, so we're excited to, uh, to start working with you guys in South Dakota, thanks.
All right.
Hey, good morning everyone, my name is Tarek Ghazi, I'm the other co-founder of Transcendent Technologies. Thank for the opportunity to be here, um, my background is, uh, more on the technical side, um, so I deal with our software designs, software architecture, software development. My background is, uh, prior to founding the company, is eleven years at I N O.
And Patty, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure, good morning, um, I, Steve makes it sound like he's worked for a long time, but I have to go back and say that, my relationship with Clay County goes back to nineteen seventy-nine. So, you know, I, I can't claim to be a spring chicken anymore. But there have been so many, uh, wonderful opportunities and, and very good relationships, friendships founded over the years. Especially enjoyed working with all of the offices at Clay County and their variety of, um, tasks and processes. And I know this presentation focuses, um, or what I was looking for in a, in another business partner was somebody who would do property tax. I, I think, um, from a programming standpoint, that's one of the more difficult things to program for the state. Whereas accounting and some of the other functions are pretty standard across the whole United States, but, you know, South Dakota, we're unique. So our property tax calculations are very unique, so, uh, we wanna help you be in compliance with this Department of Revenue. And, um, so I was very excited to meet Christy and then, um, the rest of the staff at T-Tech and be able to help them come into South Dakota with a great offering for handling the software in the treasurer's office and, um, about half of the software that goes in the auditor's office that relates to the tax billing and collecting of taxes and miscellaneous receipts and that type of thing, so. It's, um, it's not that I wanna disappear right away, I wanna make a, a, a smooth transition and so I do plan on working for about three years. So in that timeframe, we will get Ina taken care of. So in that timeframe, we will get Ina taken care of. So, thanks, Christy.
Thank you, Patty. And we're definitely not going to let you ride off into the sunset anytime soon. You have way too much value to this project. And what I'm going to do now is I'm going to share my screen. And I just want to give you a brief overview of T-Tech, who we are and what our goals and values are. So one moment, please, while I share my screen. All right. Kristin, am I on?
Yeah.
Perfect. And now we switched to slideshow. Perfect. Okay. So Steve gave you a little overview of when they formed, Stephen Tark formed the company. And remembering back to when they formed the company, obviously, Wisconsin, it may be a bigger state, but it's small in this unique niche. There was a goal in Wisconsin to collect the data and present it and store it. So people, Joe Public can access it, internal staff at the counties can access it, you know, professionals out in in the mainstream could also access that data. You know, the goal was, you know, retire those file cabinets. The people that were leaving and going off into the sunset, you know, retain that data so that all that knowledge doesn't go out the door. I think they've done a wonderful job at this and we just keep growing. And, you know, I can't, I can't tell you enough, we are not corporate America. We are a group of fifteen of us and you can see all our pics here, but we work as a team. So in that team, we've got our two business partners, partners. Stephen Tark, Steve is the Director of Operations, Tark is Director of Technology. Kristin, who's sitting across from me, and you're going to hear more from her, she's our Business Operations Manager. We have a project manager. We call him our air traffic controller. He takes care of the projects, meeting timelines, meeting goals, et cetera, that are set. We have two practice leads, one in land records, one in permit management. They are subject matter experts. They have worked in the government sector. So they're very knowledgeable and that goes a long way when we're working with our customers. We have six software engineers. We have two technical support staffs and their staff and they are local to Wisconsin. I hear nothing but good when I visit my customers. They are spot on in what they do. And then, and then there's me. I do the sales, I do the marketing. I'm at your conventions. I'll coordinate user group meetings. And if there's ever something that can't be rectified within the company, I always say, you know what? You definitely can pick up the phone and call me. I probably can't fix it on the spot, but I can take it back to our team and we can figure out a resolution. Thank goodness, I don't get many of those calls. So what sets us apart? So I did put some thought into telling you about this piece of my presentation. You know, so I mentioned the subject matter expert. Experts, it's really helpful to know that there are people that have worked in those positions at the counties. So, you know, we can build software, but the users have to find that it's efficient, user-friendly, et cetera. They are a key part in all of our builds. We always keep the end user in mind. We do listen. And I'm going to talk a little bit about our user group meetings, how, you know, we come together as a team and listen to you. I feel like business relationships, you know, right down to our personal relationships, the foundation for every success is honesty and integrity. I feel like it goes a long way and, you know, we prove that in Wisconsin, for sure. I want to tell you a little bit about Wisconsin. Not that the software is going to be identical to Wisconsin. I know I've sent links to a couple of counties in Wisconsin to show you basically what we provide in Wisconsin, but I want to impress upon you what we've done in Wisconsin. And yes, we're new to South Dakota, but this is where we're at in Wisconsin. So when I talk land records customers, we have twenty-seven counties that are land records customers. It includes parcel management, tax bill creation, receiving settlement. We also have over five hundred municipalities that use municipal tax receiving, pet licensing and bank collection. We're actually implementing that county right now in Wisconsin, Manitowoc County. Permit management, we have twenty-six counties that use permit management. We have twenty-two counties that use land use. We have a new software that tracks non-metallic mining, which is very heavily used in Wisconsin. And online sanitary permit submission, this is a newer product and honestly, it used to be a nice to have, but so many times people want to be able to upload their documents and request a permit for something without having to drive X amount of miles to the county, et cetera. So we are at four right here, but I just actually, I'm happy to share that we just, I just got signed contracts for another county, so I'm going to change that to five after I get done with this. Land conservation, this is a relatively newer suite, probably eight, nine years old, and it started out with farmland preservation. We grew into farm evaluation, nutrient management plan tracking and best management practices tracking. I tell you this because it started with one product. And then there was a need and the counties came to us and said, we need to track more and more for the state. The state head requirements, et cetera. So this is where our products go. We do link, you know, integration. We say integration, it's just a fancy word for data linking. I feel like that sets us apart. No, we do work with other vendors, GIS, imaging vendors, ROD vendors. You know, we work very heavily with Tryman in Wisconsin and, you know, I know Tryman is actually working with, I believe, Davidson County and implementing at Fall River now. So we already have our systems in place in Wisconsin now. The look and feel in South Dakota is going to be unique, of course, but those relationships are already built. And that's key. Financial institutions or financial systems. We also work with the state as far as imports, exports, et cetera. One other, you know, important point I want to make, make you aware of is credit card integration. Now, again, it used to be a nice to have. Now people want to just be able to go online, pay with a debit credit card. We already have a vendor that we work with that we can put that in place or we can have discussions with you as strip, there's another vendor that you want to work with. And software, you know, getting that data into our portal, if you will, to be able to, once again, link all that information. And of course, I wanted to tell you, we have online text, email, note of patients and Wisconsin Real Estate Sales Finder. These are two new products in Wisconsin. They're very relatively new. And we are definitely making heavy Wisconsin online text, email notifications, basically. When tax bills are created, when a payment's due, when a payment's been made, delinquents, people get notified on that by a text or email. Cuts down on paper, saves on resources. Sales Finder, Kristin Anderson, who you're going to talk to soon, she built this GIS application. And it basically is a sales comparison and you can map out your perimeters, if you will. It's used by county staff, it's used by Joe Public, it's used by assessors, appraisers, realtors, et cetera. And it's definitely something I would like to see someday in South Dakota as well, because it's a nice application. Okay, let's talk about what we do to stay connected. We do have our annual user group meetings. We actually have one coming up in Wisconsin. Typically, we come together, we talk about the priorities of the counties as a whole, right? Everybody's together. We talk about what changes are going to be made, what changes were made, updates, et cetera, in the past year. As far as timing, I like to be topical, so if there's convention or workshop happening, this is typically the time that we do it because, you know, people have to consider they have to travel. A lot of people have to travel very far, and if they're going to a convention or workshop anyway, why not have one little meeting before that? So we can just come together and everybody be on the same page. Associations, again, we've attended your spring workshop. We attended a convention a couple of weeks ago. I was really impressed with the amount of people that were at your convention and the amount of people we got to talk to. So we had some really good conversations there. Let's talk about support. We have just-in-time training. So we train at important times. We do not set the software in your lap and say, okay, let's train for a week. Good luck. So when tax bills, for example, are generated, that's an important, that's an important process. Training will be done just before that. Any type of other important processes, that's when training will occur. As far as technical support, we have phone and ticket system, tech support, and it is eight to five central and mountain time. Another way we stay connected, LinkedIn. We have a newsletter that comes out monthly and it goes, it talks about any new products, any updates that are happening with the program, any key processes that are coming up that people need to be aware of. We talk about any quick tips. For example, you know, another example would be when, you know, COVID came about, we got a task force together because in Wisconsin we had different mandates, et cetera, to work with. So within several days to a week, we got that task force in order and and then we communicated and communicated and communicated to our customers to keep it. One thing I think is important from a staff member's standpoint and and a customer's standpoint is the fact that we try to get back to the community in whatever way we can. Animal, family shelter donations, charitable donations. You know, and then we have our staff doing volunteer efforts in the background. So when I say we are a team, you know, this plays a big part in that, in that vantage. So our vision for South Dakota, we're going to continue to connect. We're not going away. We'd like to continue our special purpose meetings. There have been several meetings with Patty, just getting our arms around what the project looks like, et cetera. Kristin's going to go through the proposal next. And we are just going to keep building on these conversations. It seems like every meeting we have, we take something away. So Kristin is going to go through the proposal now and I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And I will mute myself. Okay.
Hey, Kristin. I think you're on mute. I can't hear you.
Now you should be able to hear me.
Okay, sorry about that. Christine and I are in the same room, so she can hear. Be great. So my apologies. So what I want to talk to you all about today is I guess four different subjects. I want to talk to you a little bit about our roadmap to success. So what do we, how do we envision rolling out a successful project in partnership with you all in South Dakota? What does our project look like from project inception to future customer conversations and service initiatives? I also want to talk to you about our tentative model implementation timeline. So the implementation timeline that I'm going to share with you is based on agreements coming back to us at Transcended by the end of October. So keep that in mind as you're looking at that tentative timeline. What you're going to see in that timeline is a phased rollout of features. Those phase rollout of features will also be accompanied by a phased rollout of training. We want to look at the specific software proposal and what are the specifics to Clay County? So what does this mean for you? And then finally, want to share with you some examples from our Ascent Land Record System in Wisconsin. I will say this, I guess, a couple of times throughout that presentation. What you're going to be seeing is our Wisconsin solution. It's not intended to be the same in South Dakota. We are building and proposing, building a brand-new system for South Dakota. So please keep that in mind as you look at the samples that we're going to provide. Okay, so first off, our roadmap to success. So the first step that we envisioned for a successful partnership with South Dakota counties is working with Patty. So establishing a cooperative agreement with Software Services is completed at this point. We have done that. We have a great working relationship with Patty. We have spent a good number of hours already going through and learning from her experiences, learning about the specifics in South Dakota and understanding the system that she's built for you over the last, oh, correct me if I'm wrong here, forty years, I believe, Patty. A very successful, very robust system. We do have an agreement in place with Patty to continue to work with us on building a hosted web-based solution for the County Auditor and County Treasurer's Office. So Transcendent Technologies, part of that agreement would be providing project management, software engineering and both business domain expertise. Patty would be providing consultation and business domain expertise. So again, really helping us to understand the very specific and unique needs in South Dakota. That agreement has been established and like I said, we are moving forward with our project and learning more about the specifics in South Dakota. Second step in our roadmap is to establish agreements with participating counties. And this is really what we're looking at doing with you today and with the other counties that Patty has worked with across the state. So what we're looking at doing is establishing a long-term relationship with you as your software provider. We want to be able to work with you long-term. What we're looking at doing is providing our services, our software at no cost to the counties that agree to a ten-year maintenance contract. So Transcendent Technologies would provide, again, the software development, data migration, our training at no cost to you if you agree to that ten-year maintenance contract. What you would pay Software Services is for the assistance that they provide to Transcendent Technologies and the data migration that's specific to Clay County. And that's again, to bring your data off of your legacy system, off of Patty's system and moving it on to a new system. So that's a step we're at today with looking to establish those partnership agreements with counties. Once established, what brings us to the next step is the design, develop and test phase of things. So this is where we really are going to be building the comprehensive tax billing and receipting solution that's specifically designed again for County Auditor's Office and County Treasurer's Office. We would look to integrate with the Director of Equalization property data with financial systems, GIS systems and state required forms and exports. So once that is developed, tested and implemented, we go live. At this point, we do data migration and training. This is where, and again, this is a web-based hosted solution. So we are not looking to be a drain on your county resources. This would be a hosted web-based solution. This is where your support and maintenance contract terms begin. So until you have a system in place that you can use, there is no fee to you. This, at this point, is where you would initiate your maintenance fees on a prorated basis, based on calendar date with Transcendent Technologies. And this is where you would initiate the payment for Software Services for their consultation and data migration. And really, at this point, steps three and four are a little bit, and you'll see this in the timeline that will present, the tentative timeline that will present. Steps three and four are a little bit of a traffic circle. We go kind of round and round and round between the develop, design, develop and test and then go live training and migration. So really what we're looking to do here is to implement the functions that you need in a just-in-time fashion. Have those tools available for you and then move on to the next steps along the way. So we're not looking to drop a large piece of software on you at, you know, at one time. We're going to do that in an iterative process. And then lastly, step five, we would be looking at establishing user groups, newsletters and establishing the annual face-to-face user group meetings that we do in Wisconsin, all the really good stuff that Christy talked about on keeping contact with our customers. So the newsletters, working with you to help to prioritize any enhancements and changes that you need in the system or want to see in the system. And again, Christy said this, but just to reiterate that really what we try to do as a company is continued product development and improvement. That's something that we've established in Wisconsin. It's something that we've done since the inception of the company and it's something that we intend to do with South Dakota, is that we want to establish a long-term. And it's something that we intend to do with South Dakota, is that we want to establish a long-term relationship with you. We want to establish moving forward with changes, enhancements, and continued development in our products. And again, Kristi talked a little bit about what some of our land and water products, how they're newer, and we've just continued to develop them, you know, continue over and over and over, adding new features, adding new functions, something that we're looking to establish in South Dakota as well. So those are the five steps that we look at as a successful roadmap to moving forward with South Dakota counties. So what does that look like in terms of a tentative timeline? So our tentative timeline, and I'm saying tentative model timeline, because we do expect that this gets fully developed as we move into the project, which we are starting to do at this point. So September 2022, we would look at moving live with some of the county auditor levy management functions, the centrally assessed value management functions, the special assessment TIF functions, and then integration with the Director of Equalization property data. So importing the property information that you need to create tax bills. And one of the things I should say here is that each of these timelines, you'll notice, is a month to, two, three months ahead of when we expect you to need these functions. So we would be implementing them, we would be training on them, and then we would have them available for you to, to continue to test and learn how the functions work. So if you notice that the dates are a little bit off, that's why. We want to give you the opportunity to learn before we expect you to use functions. So continuing on October 2022, we would look at having the tax bill computations available. And we would look to having the exports to Department, the State Department of Revenue for your tax data available. December 2022, we look at creating tax receipting information, some of the general receipting functions and integration with county financial system integration. February of 2023, we look at functions for managing county lien, county treasurer trust accounts, any of the county auditor revenue apportionment features. We also look at additional data exchanges with the State Department of Revenue for collections data. And again, additional integration with county financial systems. March of 2023, we look at county auditor omitted tax and abatement management. August of 2023, we do again additional exports to Department of Revenue, and this is exports for growth. And then finally, in October 2023, we look at county treasurer delinquent tax tracking and notification. And at this point, we would have the public tax parcel search available for use outside, should you desire that, outside of the county, county walls. So this is again where your, your public, your professional users would have access to the information from both the county auditor and treasurer side of things, as well as any of the data that you choose to make available from your integration with your property data from Director of Equalization. So again, this is our, our tentative model timeline. We do expect that this timeline be refined and modified a little bit as we continue on with learning more and developing our specific tasks around programming the new system for South Dakota. So what does a specific proposal look like? So again, just to repeat, Transcendence Technologies is looking at building a software solution, again, a web-based hosted solution specifically for South Dakota and at no cost to you. Once the development is complete, Transcendence Technologies will provide our data migration services and our training at no cost to you. Software Services will work with Transcendence Technologies to provide consultation and business domain expertise. So we're really going to be using Patty to help us understand all the nuances and uniqueness about your specific system. What we'd be looking at from Clay County is a 10-year maintenance agreement and support contract with Transcendence Technologies. And then Clay County would pay software services for the, for the professional services they provide and the data migration that Patty provides to you. So that is our, our proposal. What does that look like to Clay County for annual maintenance? Again, keeping in mind that there is no software, no migration, and no training costs. The annual maintenance cost to Clay County would be $20,100. That is based on the proposed timeline and the signing of the contract for 1031. So again, annual maintenance payments and payments to software services don't apply until we go live, and they'll be prorated based on the implementation date. So until you have a system that's functioning in Clay County, there is no cost to you at all. And again, annual maintenance fees are based on county size, so they are a little bit different from county to county. And just to be fully transparent and upfront, we do typically see annual increases in support maintenance for about a 3% to 4% each year per industry standards. So want you to understand that upfront, that that 20,100 will increase slightly each year. So that is our proposal for you, also giving you an idea of what your annual maintenance cost will look like initially, and then into the future, should you agree to the 10-year maintenance contract. I just want to share some Wisconsin samples with you. So again, just to reiterate here, this is our Wisconsin solution. It's going to look a little bit different, a lot different potentially for South Dakota, but this is a web-based solution. Some of the data that you're seeing is imported from other systems. Some of the data you're seeing is maintained actively in our Ascent Land Record Systems. So the examples I'm going to share with you today are really trying to focus around the tax and receipting information, because that is the proposal that we're looking at at this point for South Dakota in building out the auditor and the treasurer functions. So first screen here, we're just looking at a general property detail and a history of tax payment information. From this screen, you are able to link to a copy of the tax bill. So for individuals that have an interest in reproducing their tax bills, they have access to images of that information. This is also, the screen also has tax payment history, so probably not the most glamorous example here. We really have the, the one tax payment. I know in South Dakota, you only accept payments in full, so you know, this would be similar to what your payment history would look like. This is an example of the payment entry. So again, having payments by check, by cash, by credit card. This is an example of our general receipting, so what you would call your miscellaneous receipting search screens. So this is just a general search for all the receipts that were made in this particular county. And then a detail of what the payment screen looks like. And again, these payment information, and you can see that a little bit here on this next slide, do translate out to the, and integrate with our county financial systems. So you can see some of those account numbers coming forward in this next screen. And then finally, a copy of the receipt. All right, and I will close out then by saying thank you very much. And again, we really do appreciate the opportunity to talk with you all today.
Thank you, Kristen. Does anyone have any questions at this point?
I guess I have a question, but it'd be more directed to Carrie. At this time, what do we pay for a maintenance contract right now, Carrie?
Um, right now, we pay Patty hourly, and I would have to go back to the past several years to be able to tell you exactly what we've been averaging. But I think as far as like the, the conversion process and stuff, I think some of those costs from Patty are laid out in that estimate that was in your packet. And it probably is worth noting too that this doesn't include accounting software and like payroll accounts payable functions. Patty, you can maybe clarify this for me, but I, I think either way with Tyler or T-Tech, we would have to have separate software for that. Is that correct?
The, the accounting functions, true, are not included in this proposal from T-Tech. T-Tech specializes in tax billing and collection part. There are a lot of vendors who throughout the United States specialize in fund accounting to fulfill the GASB requirements of your annual report, as well as being able to handle the payroll that's, that's getting much more complicated as the years go by. Okay, with, but those costs, if added, when added in to, I've looked at several different vendors for the fund accounting, and when we add those costs in, we are still probably in the $40,000 to $45,000 a year range, which is going to come in significantly less than, than Tyler. It'll come in about two-thirds of the price of Tyler's. And, and it's not just the, the price. I'm, I'm concerned that we stay true to being able to have hands-on support, not being tied to a large company. Yeah, it, this is going to hit your budget hard. I, I, I guess if I, if, if I've made any errors, I haven't charged enough. Okay, and if you can look back, you probably paid an, an annual, an average of $15,000 to $20,000 a year total from software services. So going, just, just, you, you're welcome, but let's go forward and, and the costs are a little higher than what you're paying me directly because we're talking about hosted software, where T-Tech would have the management of the server, doing your backups, providing that technical part of the process so that you would reduce your in-house costs for servers and that their technical support and the updates. And in about three or four years, we would envision that the AS400 server, this currently downstairs, would be, would be retired, and that is probably going to save you an annual maintenance fee and replacement fee. It's been replaced about every five years. That would save you approximately, I believe it was about $8,000 to $10,000.
Months, once or annually?
Annual, about $10,000 is a, per year, is, is the average of what you've paid for your AS400 server. Between maintenance and replacing it every five years.
So our increasing cost would be presently at about $15,000 to $20,000. And then we add in that AS, AS fee for the server. So our costs would actually go up in the range of probably $15,000 total, once you get everything added and subtracted.
Yes.
Would go to about $44K a year.
Yes, I would say, budget-wise, looking at, yes, once you get stabilized, $40,000, $40,000 to $50,000 a year.
So I guess this is a question to staff again, and you know, maybe Rhonda, Ina, and Carrie. Are there other functions that are now taken care of that we would need to pay additionally for or hire other companies to do?
Well, I don't think anything in there that they're showing is included in our office. I'm not sure how we're going to get our information to where they say we're going to without having to have some other program. I think we're going to have to have a different, another bookkeeping system. I just don't know how, I, I, I can't put it, get it to come, how it's going to work.
So can, can you explain that, Patty, how that's going to work?
Um, yes, we have a different scenario with, with Ina than we do with the other Director of Equalizations at the other five counties that I serve. ProVal is the software that is, is going to be used, continue to be used in your Director of Equalization office. That is a KAMA system, which provides the utilities and the processes to determine property value. And that is the ex, that's major, but that is the extent of the functions that they, that ProVal intends to provide in their KAMA software. My other counties are using Vanguard, another KAMA system, that has been attending the monthly web meetings with the South Dakota Department of Revenue and following up, following the specifications of what needs to be done, starting in 2022 for the Director of Equalization Office and the Auditor's Office on how they submit their information to the Department of Revenue. Those requirements is something that Vanguard will be providing their users, in addition to the KAMA functions. They will be preparing the abstracts and providing discretionary functions and, and TIF processing and other exemptions that are very similar to the functions that I am, that my software is now providing in the Equalization Office. Ina and I have spoken briefly that she can continue to use those, that software from software services for her real property so that we can have time to determine, is ProVal going to change their mind and provide those additional functions? Or just to give T-Tech time to let them take their land management skills and options from their Wisconsin knowledge and make it available for South Dakota. So it's not an immediate transition for the Equalization Office, but there's still interface. KAMA's values or ProVal's KAMA values can be extracted, just like we've been doing with TerraScan for the past 18 years, and put into my software, and then my software can feed the data that's needed to do tax for T-Tech. So it will be, it will be a deferred step, I guess I would say, for the Equalization Office to take care of replacing the software services step that, that is their link right now.
Yeah, so if T-Tech needs to do that, then we would need to pay for that programming?
That that would be an option to switch to T-Tech's software if, if they, you know, choose to develop that, make that available, because there are other counties in South Dakota. Correct me if I'm wrong, that T-Tech would also like to install, not just the five counties that I serve.
So with the auditor's office uses our abstract, so.
Yes.
I don't know, they're getting, they're going to get an abstract, and how are they going to get that?
Right now, just the same, the same way that they are getting it now, that you're going to import the values and will, will, on your real property menu, you will continue to use that real property menu.
But how is it getting to T-Tech?
Oh, well, then, then my software, my software will take a, do an export of that data, just like when you do your fall tax convert. It stays on the same computer. All will do differently to get it to T-Tech is after you create your fall tax, it'll come off of that computer and be sent to the computer that, that T-Tech has their software on. So you'll still create what you've created in the past and just forward it to T-Tech's software for the rest of the processing in the Auditor's and Treasurer's Office. Don't mean to make it sound all complicated, but it, many of the same steps would still remain, and the fact that it's being on different computers would be our responsibility, T-Tech's responsibility, to make sure that the data gets there. And that it would be not a user thing you have to take care of.
Yeah, so is that at the county's expense, or is that part of the maintenance, annual maintenance fee? Or is that extra because it's a outside software program?
For this, I, it's going to be, my understanding is it will be included because the first time that you do fall tax, the data will be coming from our real property system. And in future, and a year after, for the And in future and a year after, for the other counties, the data will be coming from from Vanguard. If they choose to use Vanguard's functions alone and bypass what I have in my real property.
Thank you.
But this doesn't include.
Is the microphone on?
That would be Richard B stuff, like a sister company to T Tech.
But microphone.
The catch we're running into is that there there isn't really a software that provides everything, um, where Patty's did, she was kind of a like a bonus to us, I guess, for all these years, but. Yeah, so there is another company based out of Wisconsin that works with T Tech, they're called Tryman. They've actually already been here and met with me and Christina to kind of figure out what we need. Davidson County uses them now, Fall River is using them now. I believe a lot of the counties that are with Patty are also going to be going to Tryman. But that would be a different expense and a different program. However, I have a lot of M and P money that would help with my portion of it. So I do have a quote, but I haven't talked to Christine about it lately, so I would like to go back and forth with her and see if I can get my quote down a little bit, but that's just something to think about also that, you know, where we don't have, there's really nothing out there. Like Carrie said, that is like Patty's where we can all use it. But my program would at least work with T Tech as well, so.
But then how are you going to get the sales to us?
Well, I talked to Deb in Mitchell the other day and she said that she gets her information to her assessor by printing an Excel spreadsheet. And then she gives that to her assessor that way. So you, you know.
Which probably means we're going to have to have another person to be able to put in her all that information. Dan, yeah, enter.
There's got to be a program somebody can write.
Yes, Davidson County enters their sales on a daily basis and chose to not be fully integrated between the Tryman's PT fifty five programs and the sales that they're processing. They want the spreadsheet came to the printing copies and spreadsheets came to them much faster than than doing a direct program interface, which the interface would would be something to consider, Ina. Since you said you do them more on a in monthly basis that you keep the sales.
But then we're looking at an extra cost, right?
But it's going to be cheaper than another person.
Right, yeah. But.
Much cheaper.
And that that's true, but I I just feel like I'm being left out.
So Patty, you said that there is, there is a possibility for Tryman to get the information to the Assessor's Office in a different way?
Yeah, the the it it depends on what sales pit prep, so what sales ratio program that you'll be using.
Okay.
The other counties who will be using Vanguard will be able to interface with the Tryman file. Because Vanguard has chosen to provide more functions than what Proval is is offering your county. So it's it's a difference in what your Kama provider is including or not including in their software.
So what I'm hearing is we should look into Vanguard.
It it would, it would provide.
Ina's shaking her head no, tell us.
I know.
Yeah. We've got a lot of money invested in Proval and I don't know how we'll convert over unless we spend hours again, hand entering all this stuff.
But we can't leave you on an island. I mean,
Right.
we have to bite the bullet at some point, these will all work together.
Right. And I think maybe we need to look at something else just to make sure, because everything is an extra cost on here. Okay, yeah, so I I just think maybe there is something else and I know some people that have Vanguard that they're not at all happy with them and they say they can't do those reports.
Well, is T Tech, are they, are they thinking about doing what Vanguard and Proval do? Are they looking to build that software or implement it here?
People, would you like to reply to that?
Yeah, um, I think as Patty mentioned, our intention is to, you know, promote this product throughout South Dakota. So obviously, if that's a need for other customers, we will look at writing that functionality. We have a tendency to lean towards a vendor relationship. So if there is a vendor out there that's predominant that that has those functions like Vanguard. You know, we will be building a a relationship and we've already started working with Vanguard because they are providing those additional functions at some point. So I guess it's it's a little bit up in the air with with how, you know, with how things progress with with Vanguard and what are the other counties need? So I guess the answer is if it come, it's going to be towards the end of our priority list because we've already kind of laid out the timeline that we've presented. So if we do equalization functions, it will probably be a little bit later. So that's kind of where we're at with it. I know it's not as clear of an answer as you want. But if the needs there and you've got a gap, we will do our best to try to to cover it. It's a little bit unique because right now we just have one of the five counties that have this situation with a different vendor, so. No, I don't know how the rest of the state looks right now with covering those functions. Todd, do you have any more? So so I guess at the end of the day, I don't think we would, you know, leave you high and dry with having to utilize Patty's software for that functionality. We would either, you know, I don't know if Vanguard is just working on it now and that's why those other counties may not be one hundred percent satisfied. Things could change in the next year or two. I I don't want to make any promises. If there's a glowing solution out there that is is, you know, something that everybody should go with with and we have to write it for one or two counties, but I I do know that Kama is something that's done internally at the county level and if it's something that the market needs, we will most likely be building it.
So are you currently trying to work with Vanguard?
Yes. So we've made some contact there.
So I mean, we we all know there's going to be headaches implementing this, there always is when there's a chain. So like in Ina's case, if, and I'm just hypothetical, if you were to switch to Vanguard and you were having problems and we went with T Tech also, at least you could go, okay, you guys need to fix this, so it works for me. Instead of having T Tech and Proval and then having them fight because they're not necessarily working together. My understanding that correct, I mean, are you working with Proval or are you more working with?
I don't know if we've made any, I mean, we work with a lot of different vendors. I don't know if we've made any progress with Proval. And and from a Proval perspective, it will just be getting the, you know, property and assessment data from them, maybe via Patty's program. But I think there's some other gaps there with reporting and data that they're not storing currently. So that's where the gap is that needs to be fixed either with our program. Or I think currently Vanguard's working on it to Proval. I I'm not sure where they're at with the whole process. It sounds like they're not going to accommodate those additional reporting and data collection function. So again, we'll work with any vendor. You know, we will probably end up working with Proval to some extent here unless Patty already has a import that will will use in the interim. But at some point, we'll need to work with with Proval, I assume, yes. I just can't, I can't force them to provide functionality that they don't currently have. I have to work with what they have available and try to get it into our system.
But it's easier to work with a company that already has that stuff available.
It would be, yes. I I'm not sure of the history that Ina's had with them, so we'll have to maybe learn a little more about that and and see where that's at. We will, we will work with them, yes.
And Rhonda, it does this system work for you or do you need additional capabilities that aren't included?
No, for what we use, T Tech is going to be able to provide everything that we need for our tax and miscellaneous receipt. All of that going on, we have at this point even no separate vendor or anything other than we do our state DMV work, so. I myself am very impressed with what T Tech is trying to offer us. I mean, I've been through some software upgrades in my prior work experience and the fact that they're willing to sit down with Patty and Patty's willing to work with them and take and integrate everything that we need. You know, they're going to work really hard to provide for us everything that we need. And the fact that they're not requiring us to purchase the program before we start using it and is huge. That's a huge savings to our county. And like I say, the maintenance fee, the fact that we're going to have, you know, technical on call, we can call them, we can get the heat tickets put in. You know, that's part of our contract, which sometimes that isn't. And then that's where your money really starts getting spent is when you're paying those calls, you know, hey, I can't make my printer work type things, you know. I I I see this as being a benefit to the county and I'm I'm very excited about it. So I'm I'm hoping that and it sounds like they're going to really work hard to make sure all of our departments can function together like we are right now. And like they do say, you know, there are certain vendors, certain programs, even now, you know, Lisa has a different program than what we use, our basic like software solutions with Patty. She has another program, Ina has some other programs that she uses, that's normal. You know, we're always going to have that, we're always going to have to have them working on interfacing those outside programs that we're using. So like I said, I I'm I'm excited. I I hope that everybody else is on board with this as with me, but I I think it'll be a good thing for the county and we've met with them, they're they're very knowledgeable in regards to, you know, software and what we need it to do, so. I think I think it's a good thing.
So Alexis, I I had a few, I I'm wondering if you've looked through the contract, assuming you have. And I I was a little concerned. See if I can find it. About the limitations of liabilities and remedies section. Because essentially it it wouldn't allow any remedy beyond the uh, return of payments we had made.
Yes, and I was trying to contemplate from that what what other liabilities we could be exposed to. And that's why I was having a difficult time wrapping my mind around that and 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 so that wasn't one of the sections that I necessarily highlighted, though I did come across that too, thinking. I mean, if if something goes awry and I think of it more in terms of a breach of security, maybe, I I don't know. I don't know what liabilities we would be exposed to from information being exchanged or something going faulty with this. That's what I was trying to envision what we could be out. And maybe those who are users would have a better idea of that. So that's where, that's one of the reasons I didn't highlight that, but I did notice that as well. The only thing we can recover from them via the contract is what we paid them presumably for that year. So that's a real limited scope liability and exposure for them. And potentially extremely, we we bear all all responsibility for that. There were some other things too that I, and I don't know if you guys want to touch base on that. There were some other things too that I highlighted. So maybe we can tick through a few of these and then you guys can just let us know what what your thoughts are. You know, one of the things I always note when I'm reviewing a contract for the county that I prefer is when we get into governing law. With outside companies, it's very common, you guys are from Wisconsin, your standard contract is going to include that the law governing that contract comes from Wisconsin. I like to ask that that be updated to include South Dakota. Especially if you're branching into a market in South Dakota, if there are disputes or something in that regard, I want us to be dealing in South Dakota law rather than something in that regard. So I don't know if that's something that that you all would be willing to consider because one of the examples I would give is up under, that's in subsection twenty five and in nine license fees and payments. So in that nine B, it talks about if there's a late fee, so that's thirty days after presumably January one, when our reoccurring payment is due. If if we're late, then we have a late fee of eighteen percent per annum or the maximum rate permitted by law, whichever is less. Well, in South Dakota, there's going to be potentially statutory governed interest rates caps. I just don't know what that would be for Wisconsin. So that's a small example, I would say, maybe of a reason that I would prefer that we update that with South Dakota. If you are, all are comfortable with that, but you already noted some of the other things of per hourly rate. And things like in 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 item eight. Billing rates for CPS are reviewed each January first and are subject to change without notification. So my concerns about this are, yes, you guys are going to lock in at this full annual fee and it's and it's included down there too with the little asterisks of in the future, general price increases in the in the list price of the software, we're subject to. I mean, I know we're hearing here potentially a three, four to four percent increase. But we're subject to all of that. So you go fall in and the county comes on board with this. We really are tied to this company and whatever they're going to bill us for. And to kind of underscore that, this agreement will automatically cease and terminate upon failure of the licensee to pay the annual maintenance fee. So boom, we're done. And then one of my last concerns is number eighteen, return of property. Upon termination of this agreement, and this this one is one that really I is a sickling point for me. Upon termination of this agreement by either party for any reason, all software manuals, materials and documentation related thereto, including any authorized and unauthorized copies thereof, should be immediately returned to transcendent by the licensee. That doesn't seem very practical to me and I don't know if that's just something that is it is a canned term that isn't meant that way, but what do we do with the data that is generated and maintained by the county here? Should ten years from now, everything goes great for ten years, but ten years from now, we want to pursue something with someone else or in a less, how do we access the the public and private data that is maintained? So those are some of my concerns and then just to come back to that exposure, I don't know if you guys can think of any any scenario where there would be liability or something for the county or your company?
Yeah, this is Steve. I'll respond to that briefly, I guess. Most of that stuff goes through our legal counsel, so I would kind of have to rely on them. Some of it's, you know, standard contract stuff that we have in all of our contracts. So I'm not familiar with the details, but I think what I would like you to do, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
My name is Alexis Tracy and I see attorney.
Alexis, yeah. So so if you can kind of document those concerns and just send that all back to us and I'll have our legal counsel look at it and figure out, you know, if we can make changes to accommodate or if we can't, why and get back to you with an explanation. But yeah, I mean, there's certain things like the payment terms, you know, if you want to extend them, I I very seldom, I don't think I've ever charged a interest penalty. Yeah, never charge interest penalty. People usually pay on time, but sometimes you're meeting dates where you get approvals, make it go over a little bit, so. I don't think in the, I I know for sure that I've never charged anybody any penalty or or interest, so we can extend that. But the the solution there is maybe extend it to sixty days, just in case your meetings don't fall. Or just remove the interest and penalty altogether. I'm not that concerned about that one. Some of the other ones, I think I have to, you know, South Dakota law, I kind of have to talk to him about it. We did have a discussion when we were putting it together, do we, don't we? Our preference obviously would be Wisconsin, your preference is South Dakota, so. I don't think we have a, I don't think I have a large issue. If we get into other states, I think, you know, that that's where, you know, larger companies want to have it in their home state, but I think. But I think adding one more state from a legal perspective, hopefully we don't get into exercising any legal activities. But let me just run that by our legal counsel.
Thank you, Steve. And Alexis, I actually have your email. I will send you my email, so you have my contact information. And Carrie and Rhonda have been in email strings in the past. So I will send you my email and you can send me your comments, suggestions on the agreement. And we can vet that internally and with our attorney, how does that sound?
I, I do want to, I do want to have Tarek address the data situation though. Typically, you know, it's a hosted environment, so it's a little bit different. But typically, we don't hold any, any legal rights to the data, it's your data. I believe you'll have access to download or back that data up locally. But Tarek just want to talk about data a little bit more.
Yeah, we usually write that into our contracts, we can, we can change it to do that. We usually, we, we don't, we don't claim any ownership to the data of the county, it's actually the county's data, so.
We, we can't understand you, I'm sorry.
Sorry, my mic, I'm, I'm in the same office as Steve, so can you hear me now?
Yes, that's better.
So typically, we write this into our contracts that the, we don't claim any ownership rights to the data. We actually, we, we, we claim that that's the county's data. And so the county has full access to that data at any time, even though we're hosting it. So for example, a good example of that is a county's IT department wants to develop their own record or their own Excel spreadsheet. And so they want to access the data directly. We, we provide them access to that data, they, they have full access to it. And can, can generate that report. The only thing that we ask is that whoever is accessing that data doesn't make any attempt to change it. Since changing the data in the application outside of the program can result in, in a bad situation.
So don't we need the software to access the data though? So like if we discontinue services with you guys, just because everyone comes to a natural, you know, nothing necessarily goes bad, but maybe we're moving on to something else. And we would need to maintain software and I get maybe not updates and, and all sorts of things of that nature. But I'm just trying to wrap my mind around.
Not, not necessarily Alexis, you don't, you don't, in order to access the data, for example, if, if the county decided to change to another vendor, right? There would need to be a migration out of the existing system and into the new system, which is in fact what we'll have to do with Patty's system. You can get access to that data directly and, and typically you do not using the software because you have to extract it in a bulk fashion. So it would be, for example, through a relational database tool. You know, Microsoft SQL Server is what we develop on right now. And our counties can access their data out of our applications database using Microsoft SQL Server Management Studio, which provides direct programmatic access. They can access it through any programming tools, programming language. A lot of them have their own reporting tools that they use inside of the county, like a Crystal Reports or something like that. Or even, even through Excel or Microsoft Access and those can connect directly to the database. So there, there's lots of ways to actually connect to the data. Or, or retrieve it.
Okay, I mean, that, that helps, that makes sense to me. I was just trying to figure out how we're going to actually return things to you all. When we don't, I mean, even things like manuals and things. And if you say, hey, listen, I mean, that's not practical, we're not going to require you to return manuals to us. Let's just remove that from the contract then. Because it just seemed, I get that it's boilerplate language, but then sometimes I, I was just trying to figure out how that, how that works. So I have my comments noted in a PDF that I can, I can email. And I'll add in, I already added in one of the ones that Betty had, had noted and I will add in the other one as well. And then maybe I'll CC the commission on, on what I sent to. So you guys know BCC at least, so you know where I've left it and then we can go from there.
Thanks a lot.
That sounds great, yep.
I'll send you my email right when we're done, so you have it.
Sounds good. Betty, did you have any other?
No, those, those were the big ones, yeah.
Okay, thank you, everybody. And as questions arise, please feel free to send them to probably Carrie or Rhonda. And they'll make sure I get that information. And Carrie, Rhonda, I will send you a copy of the presentation today. So you have it in hand, I know we gave you a lot of information and it's always good to absorb it after the meeting. So if there are no, no other questions, we'll end this meeting. And I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity, we won't let you down.
Thank you.
Take care of yourselves. Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
So for Aina and Lisa, do you guys need to talk to Patty some more? And T-Tech, just so they can reassure you, or you can ask all the questions one-on-one, that this is going to work for you?
I don't, I'm, like I said, I've already met with Chimen, who works hand-in-hand with T-Tech. And I feel completely confident in their ability to work with Patty. And I, like I said, I've talked to other counties who've already made the, the change. And I think that what, and I've seen the action, I've seen it in action, they've come and they've shown us what to do. I'm, I'm totally fine going forward with my portion of it.
So we need to make sure that you get everything you need then. That it's not going to require a lot of labor.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm afraid that it's going to cost a lot of money. Because they're saying this, whatever you said.
They should be able to give us that number, once they figure out exactly what you need. And Patty should know exactly what you need, correct?
Yes, and we did talk about it yesterday, but there is still too many unanswered questions that I keep thinking about.
That's what I want you to do, I want you to get those answered. Because I don't want to rush into this, because there's no need to rush yet. But I want you comfortable and I want your questions answered, so they can give us what the price, if there is going to be more of a price.
Hopefully Mike can hear me if I talk, I'm not. Because the other thing I would say is that in term 11B, licensee acknowledges that Transcendent has no obligation to ensure that software operates in conjunction with licensee's other software systems or hardware, except as otherwise expressed, they agree to the writing. So if we're going to come to an agreement of them to help craft some of these things, that's good. And there are other provisions that acknowledge they're looking at doing that. But there is, they, they say, hey, we're not responsible for making sure it works with everybody else's stuff. Unless we express the agreement right.
Which I would like in there, because they're guaranteeing pretty much in this meeting that it'll all work together. And that they can get it to work together.
Well, I think with Patty's involvement, that's the benefit of having Patty involved, is that she is going to make sure that the things that we need. You know, like we were talking about how, you know, there are certain reports that we run once a year. Well, Patty's going to make sure that those reports, before we even get to that point where we're like, oh, it's not working. Patty's going to check and make sure those things are working before we do. So I think Patty's involvement is key to, no matter like what we do. You know, going forward, Patty is key to this.
Yeah, Patty is, Patty is our bridge to the future, whichever software we go with, the way it looks to me. And this is probably the most trouble-free path forward. And should we have a list of software packages that we want to ensure are, are compatible with the systems that they're going to provide to us? Can we, can we put together a list that we get assurance, assurances from them? That they'll handshake properly?
Yep. So I mean, as far as Aina, don't worry about the cost, that's our problem.
Yeah.
That, that has nothing to do with where your job is, okay?
Okay.
So don't worry about what it costs, you get what you need. We'll figure out the cost from there. And what we can afford. You get all your questions answered, so you're comfortable, that's the most important thing for you right now.
I, I still think you maybe should look at something else. I mean, just because, it's not that I don't trust Patty or anything or these guys. But I think we need to look at stuff, they're showing you the pretty side of it. They're not showing what's in the background and that's what we're used to looking at.
Correct. Well, if you come out of this and you're not comfortable, you still come to us and tell us that.
If you have an alternative, you should present it.
Okay, well, I did. Because I think like in code, which is what most of the rest, I think all the other ProVal users use, or Tyler, in code Tyler. It's the same thing. But from what I can see, they offer all the same things that we, that Patty does.
But according to T-Tech, ProVal is not offering some of the services that you're supposedly having though? Is that correct?
No, because then they, it downloads into in code or Tyler. And then that's where those reports are printed from them. Like the abstract, which I have a hard time that their abstract is first, because you would think ours was, because that's where all the numbers come from. She can't get her taxes until she has numbers from me.
Right.
And they come from our abstract.
Patty's telling us that it'll work.
I know.
So you talk to Patty, if that's who, or whoever you need to talk to. Just so, and ask her whatever questions you have.
And I have asked her lots of questions, but I'm still not, not comfortable.
And I, I think Alexis, you know, said something really important, which is that, you know, we need to think about putting in the contract, those things that are absolutely essential for us. You know, if, if it, you know, maybe a list of programs that need to integrate. And then I, you know, I think the commission really needs, you know, a clear sense of what that integration for every program will cost. If anything, so I leave this meeting, you know, realizing that there are a lot of other costs out there, but I don't know what they are. And that, that concerns me. You know, I, I don't think I could sign onto a contract without understanding, you know, its fiscal impact in the coming years. So.
I think 11B tells us what we need to do. Provide a, provide a list of software that we're using, that, that we need to have interface with this, this program.
Question of, okay, on the proposal that we were given, it does have estimates from T-Tech and from Tyler. Where did Tyler's figures come from?
Those are from estimates that Patty solicited from Tyler.
Okay. Patty.
For her county, yeah.
Basically, because there's, yeah, some dramatic differences between the two.
And Tyler is only giving us a year of history. And that was one of the things that, that Patty had said too, that, you know, with history not being really included with Tyler. She said, she's, you know, she's a programmer, she knows these things. She said, it's not any harder to give 20 years of history than it is to give one year. And so with Tyler, we don't get all the history that we can pull from our software now. I mean, I can go back to 1995 and pull things. So that would be, you know, a lot of digging back in the vault for things that we could just pull up on the computer otherwise. As, you know, as far as getting a list of, of programs that will work nicely, I guess the, the counting and the accounts payable and payroll will be separate. I don't see where that necessarily, well, it would need to interface because we'd need to have those, you know, the revenues from the property taxes and things that would interface in. But we don't know what program we'll be using yet for that. And that's something that was kind of the next stage. So, you know, Patty's contemplating in her next three to four years retirement plans that she would start with the important, essential like property tax functions. And then move on to the fund accounting and the, you know, accounts payable and payroll functions. So those would come later, I don't know that we could give a list of the softwares for that right now at this point. And maybe that's something to tackle down the road. So. In a separate contract, I guess.
Couple of other things for those of you who will use this to maybe be aware of too. The support services are noted as reasonably acceptable answers and approaches. It's vague, I don't know how else to turn that, but just make sure. I mean, I think if you have a good working relationship with this company, you're going to be okay. If you don't, and you're waiting on tech support from them, that could be problematic. It also says they'll be available Monday through Friday, there is no hours listed. Now again, that could be a plus to us, they're willing to work outside of normal business hours and, or change their hours later and expand them. We don't necessarily want to lock in on a contract with them eight to five. But you could also be subject to whatever those hours are, if they are, you know, 10 to four Eastern Standard Time, whatever that might be.
On their presentation here, they did say eight to five Central Standard, but that isn't part of this contract.
And, and Mountain, and they did, right, it's not in the contract. They did extend the Mountain hours because they found that the, the West River counties were going to have trouble with that eight to five Central time. They needed to have Mountain time and so they worked that in there too, but.
So in other words, right, just something to be aware of for those of you who are going to use this and need your support.
Anybody have anything else?
There's work to be done.
Yes.
So we'll try to get the answers that we can get. I know that their, you know, their offer of that 20, 20,100 or whatever with the free software or the no-cost software development had a deadline of October 31st. And I, I think, you know, if we're actively working on something, they would probably be a little bit flexible with that. But they set that deadline because they want to get started actually developing and writing the software. So probably have that on the agenda then for the 12th and then the last meeting in October, just to keep us on track.
Sounds good.
Agreed. Thanks for your patience so far, Daniel.
Lisa.
Yes.
Let's start with the office closure, let's do something.
Okay, and I actually don't need to. We were, Tom from MIS, our IT guy, he passed away last week. And we wanted to go to his funeral, which is tomorrow, but instead we're going to go tonight to the visitation, so that doesn't need to happen. But I do want to point out that Tom died. And we now are in a position where we have no idea what we're going to do with our office stuff. Because Tom was all of our guy, like he came when all of the stuff was broken and all the stuff was down. He came and fixed our computers. So I don't want to be in a position with Patty someday, like I was telling the ladies today, I said, I don't know who I'm going to call when my scanner doesn't work. I don't know who I'm going to call, I mean, I, I know I can call the other, the two people that are in the office, but they didn't live in Jefferson. Tom lived in Jefferson, he could pop over whenever. And I told Carrie and Rhonda, I said, I don't want to be in that same position with Patty someday, where we're like, what do we do? So that's just to piggyback on that.
So that's something Erickson's can do?
No, because MIS owns our equipment, like our equipment, we lease our equipment from MIS. And I, like I said, I know Jeremy and Kurt will take care of me, it just won't be the service that I'm used to. And, you know, but anyway, that's why we wanted to go to Tom's funeral, we're going to go to his visitation instead. So that's, that doesn't really need. that doesn't really need to be talked about.
Okay.
And then I, I guess I forgot to put in my utilities on my budget, so, which is actually okay, because I had time to actually relook at it again and I just need to request four hundred and twenty dollars for that.
For utilities?
Yep. And if you guys are, if you want me to cut anything, I can probably do that, I know that that was.
Was, I see that, so repairs and maintenance, is that what you call it or R?
My what?
No, that's RMP, isn't it?
My MMP, MMP is, yeah, that's.
That's different, so repairs and maintenance, is that for your scanners, that type of equipment or?
No, that's, um, that's my like, um, supply, well, my repairs and maintenance, yeah, that would be Tom's stuff, but also I use a lot of MMP for that stuff. So the, the reason I bumped up the repairs and maintenance is I'd really like to get my counter redone.
Okay.
Um, I think that would go there, Carrie. And I know that John wanted to wait until after COVID essentially and I, I mean, we're to the point where we're not bleaching the counter every day, so it's, but it's looking really rough.
The counter, the counter could come out of the courthouse budget, and that's something that would be like a building, you know.
I had, I'm waiting to hear back from John, who broke his finger, so, um, John Aiden.
Oh, okay.
So he, I don't know if and when he could even get me in, I, because I told him, I said, I have money that I could do it still this year, or if we did it with the courthouse, we could do it whenever, but I mean, we're not going anywhere, so ideally it would be nice to get it to be looking good. And not giving people slivers.
What was the increase there?
Two hundred dollars, she had five hundred last year, went to seven hundred this year.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then the data processing went from ten thousand to twelve thousand.
And that would be, I think I use, well, I think I use that maybe for my, for my, um, MIS bill. But a lot of my MIS stuff comes out of MMP, but if I'm going to be using my MMP money for a software upgrade, I'm gonna have to have that bill come out of somewhere else.
Okay.
So. That we're kind of, you know, I, I can't really make any decisions without knowing what we're going to do moving forward with the software. Because I do have the MMP money to help pay for my software upgrade. If we go that way.
And that's where the extra two K went with, uh, from for, uh, data processing or?
Yeah, I mean, because if I'm gonna have to use my MMP money to pay for my Tryman software, which I can do, I've been saving my money for, you know, this very reason. And, but then I would have to pay for my MIS services from somewhere else.
So Tryman, is that gonna come out next year then? We're gonna have to pay for that here pretty.
Well, Carrie, what did we talk, what did we think about Tryman? Because I, I don't necessarily have to pay for Tryman, because I don't really use it except for the liens. But we've, we've been discussing that, I'm sorry, TTEC, TTEC, Tryman, yes, that would come out next year.
In twenty twenty-two?
Yes, unless they make me pay for it upfront, if we decide to go forward this year. But again, I have money, I have money in my MMP.
Okay.
Luckily, we've been saving that for this very reason.
We knew what was coming, some, someday.
It was coming, and we just didn't know when, yeah. Oh, and then I, if you guys, I can take my furniture budget down. Because I, I mean, I wanted to get new desks for the public computers, but we can always, I can get those a different year if, if it helps.
You, you had that in this year's budget, didn't you?
I did, but I ended up getting stand-up desks for Christina and I instead, after the back safety course that we took with, with Lynn, so, um, so then that kind of took that budget, you know, that kind of took a chunk of it, because I thought our safety was a little important too.
Well, it's not that we're looking to cut, it's just when you had come in and presented it to us, you had said that you'd raised a pay twenty percent.
Right, yeah.
Then.
Yeah, yeah, right. Well, and it's, you know, without knowing what the cost is for other things, you know, everything seems to be going up in terms of services and furniture and things like that, so it's one of those, well.
But I mean, the twenties, the twenty percent was just on repairs and maintenance, data processing, supplies and travel.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, that's a guess, at the best, anyway. I mean, your furniture stayed the same. And so, and it's not like salaries, you didn't do twenty percent of salaries.
No.
I mean, it's just those.
No. Those few things, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It just sounded worse than it.
Yes, I know, it's kind of like when I said the, you know, our mortgages had gone up this amount, but then I thought about it and it was like, that's fifty percent more than what we did last year, so when you think about percentages, it sounds a little more extreme than when you look at the dollar amount, so. Yep. So.
Does anybody have any other questions for Lisa?
No.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five for adoption of twenty twenty-two annual budget and levels. We're projecting a sixteen point zero eight percent reserve.
I think Dan's probably here for budget discussion, is that right?
I just wanted to see what happens, I know. I understand you guys have an incredibly big challenge to overcome at some point.
Yeah, come on up. Great, and state your name, sure, and maybe who you're with. Yeah, as long as it's up, the button should be up. There you go.
Uh, Dan Berniston, Vermillion Public Library Director. I, my understanding is, one of the proposals or part of this resolution is to cut outside funding, and I know you guys have a challenge in making a, a budget that meets the needs of everything you've got going on, supporting the jail. Asking my staff, as far as I know, um, we have always provided library cards to Clay County residents for free, we have not charged them. Um, any users who apply for a library card outside of Clay County pay a forty-five dollar a year or it's starting in twenty twenty-two, it's been going up by ten dollars a year until next year, would pay a forty-five dollar fee because they do not come from an area providing support for the library, so the city or Clay County. Clay County residents have long been getting a fantastic deal, getting free library cards. If you kind of look at the, the State Library and their annual report provides an average local government operating revenue per capita across the state averages out to thirty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents, that was in their annual report at the end, which I provided to you. If for the, and I haven't, I checked the twenty nineteen census data, the twenty twenty is still kind of coming out in pieces, I think. Certainly the city of Vermillion and maybe Clay County population has gone up. If you figured that out per capita, you know, that would work out to somewhere between a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year for Clay County resident library services at that state average level to the forty-five dollars-ish that the city provides us, last time we calculated it to about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Obviously, we've been getting four thousand dollars a year from the county and using that money, we have opted to provide free library cards. If, if those funds were no longer to be available, it would be something I would have to let the library board know, obviously, and it would be their decision ultimately to decide where to go from there. And I can't say what they'll say, if just general practice is that library users who are not coming from the, the govern, the area that the governing body supports or provides funds for, for pays in, pays for the privilege of having a library card, so if someone from Nebraska across the river, we've got non-residents there, Yankton, someone who works in Vermillion but lives in Yankton and they want to use our library, they pay that forty-five dollars a year fee. And I don't know if Carrie can answer this question and I don't want to put her on the spot, I don't know how many years the county has been providing library uh, money to the library, I know it went up at some point in the past for maybe about three and a half thousand to four thousand before I started. But there's no point that I know of that we've ever charged a Clay County resident for a library card and I, I, I would be very reluctant to start doing that now. You know, and it may well be a, as your discussions have been, if this is a short-term or temporary thing for a year or two, it may be that that's something the library board is willing to just say, well, you know, maybe we can find that money from somewhere else. But long-term, I think it is something they would have to talk about, because I, I do not believe the city would be willing to cover the cost and I, I guess I can't speak for them of like county residents getting library services for free at the expense of city taxpayers. I don't think they're gonna give us that extra money. Um, I don't think they would be able to justify that to city taxpayers. So I, I, I don't have, um, I understand the challenges you face, at this point, I just kind of want to know where we stand, so I can report back to the library board and then they can review how that impacts our library card registration policy and where we might want to go from there. This, you know, uh, the money you provide to us is one of several of those outside agencies or non-mandatory expenses you provide funds to, um, and they would all be impacted also, and I don't know how many of them you've heard from. You know, as a point of reference right now, um, you know, one thing we've done an ever-growing amount of is after-school programming, children's programming and activities and in recent years, those four thousand dollars we received from you guys has been allocated to help offset the cost, we have a new, since twenty twenty, we upgraded our part-time program aid position to a full-time youth services assistant position. The, um, city covers the bulk of that cost, but we use that four thousand to help cover a portion of that person's salary. Because we saw so much demand for after-school activities, preschool activities, all the storytimes we offer. Um, it was a lot for one person, offering activities from K through twelve and sometimes seven days a week to cover. And we set us the expectation, the library, uh, library, you know, just as a point of reference, last time I checked is open more hours than any other public library in the state of South Dakota, even more than Rapid City and Sulan libraries, we're open seven days a week, uh, eight AM through to nine PM, Monday through Thursday, and offer hours on Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And there are costs that come with providing those services. So I, I, I'm not asking anything, I'm not trying to stir up or add to your problems or challenges, more I just came along after speaking with Carrie and saw, you know, this was something that was in those batch of expenses that you were proposing not to fund this year. Um, I'm just looking to see which way that goes, so I can report to the library board and then it would be up to them how they respond. But if you have any questions for me, I know it's been a while since I've been here and presented, but I send you guys regular reports and updates and an annual report, so none of this is new to you. But please, ask me now or anytime. And I'm just here to see what direction this goes in and what your guys' thoughts are. Thank you, I, I appreciate the time and on your already long and complex agenda.
Do you have any calculation of how many county residents have cards?
I do not, because in all honesty, for that very reason, in our library system, it's set up where we have two like major classifications of patrons, residents and non-residents. And because Clay County residents have always been considered free library cards exactly like city residents, they are not separated out, we would have to go through all six thousand eight hundred library cards, look at their addresses and separate them out, probably manually, which would be a time-consuming process and something that might be useful to do, but the way our library card system is set up, it always has been because of the way this arrangement has always happened in the past, is that there's just those two categories, so all city of Vermillion and Clay County residents are just lumped together as cardholders who do not have to pay for a library card. Obviously, there are plenty of county residents who use the library, whether it's for programs or checking out. County residents, obviously, you know, we don't card people when they come into a program, whether it be an adult program or kids program or an after-school program. People can come into the library and use a computer, they can log in with their library card, but if they don't, they can use a guest pass. Um, but as far as checking items out and taking them out of the library, you have to have that physical library card, so we know who you are and we can get ahold of you if those materials aren't returned. So I, I, I wish I did have a better answer for you, but just a result of the history between the city and the county and our library, we've never needed to differentiate between county residents and city residents, it's always just been free library cards to vote.
And one thing I'll say as a, as a regular library user is that kids really use the library. You know, it's, it's one of those places that is alive with kids and you know, when you walk in, there's a board that has, um, all the activities and there are multiple activities every day for kids, and so, you know, in, 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 in some cases, there'll be, you know, like huddles of sketchy-looking kids, kind of hanging out in front of the library. And, you know, and it, it, it functions as a community center in, in some, in some respects, it's a, a place where kids can go after school. You know, to, uh, yeah, to, uh, to meet other kids in a safe, a safe space. And, and, you know, so thank you for coming, I mean, I, I guess I, you know, I hadn't really thought about the, the library cards, you know, um, yeah, for, for county residents as being a, a service specifically for, uh, for the county.
I mean, you know, in all honesty, to be completely upfront with you guys, obviously, the four thousand dollars we get from you guys is extremely useful and, you know, explain to you how you use it, but compared to the six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars we get from the city, you know, and the library foundation and the Friends group have also contributed, you know. I can't speak for those groups or the library board at this point, you know, if this money went away this year and next year, it may be the case that they'd be willing to find that money from somewhere else. I can't commit to anything, obviously, at this point, because that would be something they'd have to vote on and decide on and where that money would come from, you know, but definitely long-term, it would be hard to justify providing free services to county residents, you know, like any service, services cost money, whether it's police, fire, roads, library cards, that, you know, we have operating expenses, staff, the building. And, um, again, asking the city or some other source to pick up those that money, so county residents who are already getting an overwhelmingly fantastic deal, you know, for free library cards, it would be a challenge to justify permanently getting those funds from elsewhere. So I, I'm just here to see what happens and share with you my initial concerns. It's been a great arrangement for, as long as anybody probably can remember at this point, I might have to go back and find Jade Larson or if we really wanted to get into it, dig back through historic minutes to find if there ever was a point where we charged county residents for library cards. Or, um, we're not getting some funding from Clay County to help cover that. I'm not aware of it at this point.
I, yeah, without going back through historic minutes, I wouldn't have any idea either.
But, thank you.
I went through your budget presentation and it's, you know, as usual, it's impressive, like your monthly things that you, you share with us and, uh, yeah, I, I feel kind of bad about it, I did, you know, I was especially impressed that, uh, you do, you get six hundred and fifty-three thousand from the city and four thousand from us and there's federal funds of, uh, two thousand bucks, and then you've got other operating income that must be from fines and, and the external library cards and those sorts of things, so.
Replacement library cards, copy fees when people make copies of copier. You know, we have a maintenance agreement for the public copier and we charge ten cents a page for copies, twenty-five cents for color, faxes, and some other, they're, they're awesome. And we've been very fortunate, uh, we have the library foundation, the Vermillion Public Library Foundation, has been very generous with the money they received, as several local entities did from Edith Seegrest and, um, the Anderson Endowments and we've been getting money and a lot of the technology projects that have gone on, some behind the scenes and some uh, out in the libraries such as replacing computers. The library foundation has paid for a lot of that over the last five to seven years. So we've not had to send that money from a, a main budget. The Friends of the Library have supported a lot of projects, especially, uh, children's activities and as many of you know, the Friends of the Library group holds that monthly used book sale in the basement. Last month, for example, they raised seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars in the two days they helped to sell. And that money goes back into our summer reading program every year to pay for all the performers and presenters we offer for the kids during the summer. So we do, we have money coming in from several different sources, um, although you know, obviously a governing body, the city of Vermillion provides the bulk of it, we function as a, a department of the city of Vermillion and all those others are less tangible or fixed, whether it be fines, replacement fees, donations. less tangible or fixed, whether it be fines, replacement fees, donations, revenue from copies and faxes and those types of things. There's a lot of moving pieces like
I know.
any budget, not on the scale of yours.
I know.
We're just one department.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you for the time.
Anybody have anything else for the resolution? The adoption did.
Move to approve.
I have a motion in a second. You have something?
No, I was just
Discussion time, so.
Yeah, I think last time we talked about what the heck was Dakota abilities? And if you looked at the budget letter on page sixty-one of our budget document, it explained that there were that money was seven hundred and twenty dollars per patient for four patients from Clay County that are that have severe disabilities that are in in the care, I think in a Sioux Falls area. And what they did was charge us seven twenty for each of those four patients that are under care from our area. That's the only one that I really had a, you know, I know that we talked about it. We didn't, we had some confusion of what that would be. You can see the letter on page sixty-one of our doc- budget document, and man, that's a, if I were to add anyone back in besides Vermillion Public Library, it would be that Dakota abilities, because I think that fits within our core core responsibilities.
Shouldn't that be in with welfare rather than?
It's, that's where it's been.
So why is it under the non-mandated?
Right.
And that sounds like it's
Because it's administered by the welfare department.
Sixty-one.
So what they're really asking for is sixty dollars a month
Oh, yes.
per resident? So does that mean if there were six?
It'd be more, but yeah.
So I I hate to put it under the non-mandated stuff.
Yeah.
Because what if it's one patient? You know, if they're asking for the sixty dollars a month per patient, that seems like a contract.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get into what's
Their letter does say that it's a voluntary donation.
Yeah, historically, local counties were assessed sixty dollars per month for each individual served at a state institution. A similar voluntary contribution is made by many counties to agencies such as Dakota abilities who serve a county resident in lieu of placement in the developmental center at Redfield. Such payments are allowed by the state of South Dakota.
The one thing I'm going to say here is, Sesdak here in Vermillion, South Dakota, actually provides the same quality of 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 help that that Dakota abilities does.
Is it?
Yes, they they have the same programs, same everything. And I guess I feel if we're going to cut them, we better cut this one too, because I I just can't see any other way. And the other thing is there is a rumor going on that Redfield's going to go away and that these these outside units are going to pick them up.
I think that's more than a rumor.
Yeah, I do too, but I'm just saying that. And we actually Sesdak in Vermillion actually has got, at the moment, got four people that are coming from, that they're going to serve from Redfield that are coming to Vermillion.
That may be the floor we're talking about here.
Me, so I I guess I'm not going to, I guess I disagree. I don't think we 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 fund them. I really don't. I think we need to fund their own things that are here in Clay County. And I know that some people decide that they, that the people that are supported, they will take them out of Sesdak and take them somewhere else, but that's up to them. And I but I think we got a good program here in Vermillion, and I think if if we're going to support Dakota abilities, then we need to support it. And I, right now, I don't think that we support either one of them right this year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to to point that out, you know, these that, you know, they went on to specify their people in wheelchairs are non-verbal, need assistance at mealtime and toileting, and I thought, you know, it kind of tugged at the heartstrings. I and I understand that we we need to be consistent.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes.
Yeah, and and to speak to, you know, Dan's issue, I am assuming that next year we reconsider as budget allows all of these programs. And and, you know, one of the discussions we've had is asking perhaps next year organizations to actually, you know, suggest what they're using the funds for.
I'll keep my list, and, you know, I know that yours yours is something that we really need to have at the front of our line here.
Absolutely. I'm happy to just present a request like we would every year next year for your consideration, whether you want me to come present it in person or submit the reports. Would you guys just let me know what you need to consider that? I, you know, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
I mean, I I do consider the Vermillion Library not only an essential service, but probably the best library I've ever worked with. Yeah.
You run a good show.
Approval for employees flu vaccines.
So the nurse's office will be offering flu vaccines like they do every year. And each year, you guys have approved to pay employee flu vaccines if insurance doesn't cover it. I will say, it's been many, many years since we've actually gotten a bill for a flu vaccine, so insurance is covering them. But, you know, on the off chance that something would slip through or somebody.
And where does this payment come out of?
You know, usually, we've taken it out of commissioners. Suppose we could take it out of each department depending on, you know, which employee that department worked for, that would be fine too.
Take it out of the commission.
Um, I just, I think that realistically, probably the only employees we might see a bill come through for might be a part-timer that doesn't have insurance through us. Otherwise, our insurance does cover, so.
I'll move to approve.
Yeah, I'll I'll second. And and my my theory is that we're so much better off having as many employees as possible have flu shots.
I have a motion and a second for the discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six for non-sufficient fund checks removal of asset.
So this one, and I think Rhonda's listening in her office, she can probably answer questions too, but this one is for old NSF checks that the treasurer's office has kind of been hanging on to for years and years. There's just like a small stack of them, and we're allowed to just kind of write those off at this point. I think we had one from nineteen ninety-seven or nineteen ninety-nine. I mean, there's really, those people are gone, you know, so that's what this is.
Bank might be gone.
Most of those obsolete after ninety days or something.
I, something probably, I don't know.
And this is for the amount of two thousand, two thousand dollars, two thousand and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I noticed that we had a pretty good bump in in collections this last year, I think. I don't know where to look for it here, but it seemed to me like we had
Revenue side?
Yeah, on the revenue side, we had kind of a bump with that that extra collections efforts that you made. Maybe that's paying off to some extent.
Might be, might be. I know we have, last time I checked, we had only seen like a one percent return from from the collections agency, but I have noticed lately that a lot of people have been coming in and paying their court-appointed attorney fees like right away. So I I don't know if that's just a change in what the judge is saying to them, or if we're just, you know, getting a little luckier with statements and stuff. I don't know, so.
Well, if there's a difference in in what they're hearing, we appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes. The tough pointing quote for the Public Safety Center.
I put that in there because Travis asked me to get that, since we didn't include the Safety Center on this latest project. But, you know, worth noting that the city would share a third of that cost, so they'd probably have to improve that, approve that too. I think they did a nice job out here. I was a little concerned that the mortar didn't seem to match. It seems to be gray. He explained that that's going to take a good six months to cure and really turn to the right color, so. Otherwise, I think they did a nice job.
Carrie, this is Andy. If I could jump in, I just let you know, I did speak to the police chief, and he mentioned the city manager that we're asked for this vote, and they are in agreement that they would be responsible for a third of that cost as per our joint powers agreement. And they also have no objection to that. That's that's needed maintenance.
So our vote then is to approve a contract. Is that right?
Yeah, because it's just an estimate they gave us, right, Carrie?
Yeah, that's their estimate, and and I suppose they would want some kind of approval to get us on their work schedule for spring. And it's below the bid threshold, so I think we'll be fine that way.
And so for us, the money would come out of the building fund?
Yes.
The courthouse, yeah, or for, you have the building money, whichever.
And so it would be seventeen thousand eight hundred minus thirty percent of that. All right, so I would move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes. Motion passes. Let's see, the property complaint from Mike Goebel. Probably to put this on the next meeting.
Yeah.
And then the court-appointed attorney conflict contract amendment. So I asked Alexis to contact Phil and Sam to see if they would start earlier to save us some money for this year, and they agreed to November first, correct?
Yes, yeah, thank you. Actually, very brief, you know, and then we went back and forth, just a couple of tweaks, so I think it looks good, excited.
So we get a baker's dozen here.
Yeah.
Thirteen months for the price. Okay.
Fourteen months, even better.
So I move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? So this is the amendment to the Public Defender's Contract.
Oh, okay.
Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes. There's nothing in joint jurisdiction yet. Executive session for personnel matters. I'm entertain a motion to go in.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those are roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, we're in executive session.
I move to a common executive session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, we're in regular session.
I move to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, we're adjourned, thank you.
I have one, one more tidbit. Are you still there? Yes. This is just a a a little sidebar. There should be some work orders coming from the DOT. I'm not sure if they'll go to Rod or Carrie. It's a little unusual, but they'll come right from Colleen Cuser, and that's for those bridge removal projects. That's also coming here pretty quick. And they need to be wet signed and sent back to the DOT, not to me. That's it. Later, guys.
Brad, how's how's the knee coming, Mike?
Not too bad. I'm not, it's kind of, the meeting gets a little long because I can't sit in one spot for a long time.
Yeah, yeah, understood. I think I'm going to have to have mine done really quite soon, too.
Yeah, hold it off as long as you can. I don't think they're that big a deal.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
See you.
See you, guys.